Good morning. Whereas pediatric cancer affects thousands of young Americans each year as the leading cause of disease-related death for children, in this year more than 10,000 of our nation's youth will be diagnosed with this tragic disease. Thus every September, America honors all those who have been affected by this life-threatening illness. Young girls and boys with childhood have been cut short, the loved ones who know the pain pediatric cancer causes, and the communities across our country that rally to support their friends and neighbors during these difficult times. And although survival rates for some forms of childhood cancers have risen sharply over the past few years, thanks to major advances in research and treatment efforts, understanding this disease, we must continue to be vigilant in supporting scientific discovery and moving our nation closer towards finding cures. Now therefore, I, Raúl Valdés Fóli, as mayor of the City of Coral Gables, along with the members of our city commission, do hereby proclaim September 2018 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Coral Gables.
My name is Sylvia Vanny, and I thank you, mayor, commission, everyone here. This is my baby, and he died from childhood cancer. In 2008, we started a foundation, the Mystic Forest Foundation, when we realized that there was very little funding for childhood cancer research, which is why there's very grim statistics for it. Childhood cancer remains the number-one disease killer of children in our country. The incidence of childhood cancer continues to climb, yet government funding for childhood cancer research is less than 4 percent. That's why you see so many foundations like ours doing everything that we can to try and raise money for research. So it's only through the raising of awareness that people will begin to realize how little funding there is for our children. My own baby, in three-and-a-half years of treatment, had 55 cycles of chemotherapy, 50 rounds of radiation, 12 surgeries, over 200 blood and platelet transfusions. People don't understand and don't realize what these children really go through. It's really devastating, so I thank you all for helping us to raise awareness of this devastating disease. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a wonderful, wonderful awareness effort you're having, and it's great, and I hope things come out of it. Let's have a picture taken here with our commissioners. Hi, how are you? Not well. Look over there. Whereas founded 1948 with inaugural Junior Orange Bowl parade through downtown Coral Gables, the organization has expanded its vision to host competitive athletic, academic, and cultural arts events in a culturally rich, diverse, and safe environment. And whereas, over the years, the Junior Orange Bowl has been serving South Florida community and the youth of the world by hosting a premier international youth festival, which includes basketball, golf, tennis, creative writing, and events specifically designed for physically-challenged boys and girls. And whereas, as of 2018, a series of athletic, academic, and cultural events make up the Junior Orange Bowl festival that draw on skills, talents, and strengths of over 7,750 boys and girls from ages 5 to 18. And whereas, it is altogether fitting and proper that on this momentous occasion, on the 70th anniversary of the Junior Orange Bowl, we acknowledge the value of this organization, which envisions a world in which every student and athlete is provided the opportunity for success. Now therefore, I, Raúl Valdés Fóli, as mayor of the City of Coral Gables, along with the members of our city commission, do hereby proclaim September 11, 2018, as Junior Orange Bowl Day in Coral Gables.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. My name is Franley DeFilly. I am the 2018 president for the Junior Orange Bowl. It is an honor to have the City of Coral Gables, the mayor, and the commissioner to partner
at 9 o'clock.
us for the past 70 years as making Coral Gables the whole city, and we really thank
Thank you. And to begin, we will have the invocation by Reverend Monsignor Thomas Marín, St. Augustine
you for the partnership and the legacy of the Junior Orange Bowl, which basically we're here to service the youth in the community through athletic, academic, and cultural experience. Mr. Mayor, this is a token from the Junior Orange Bowl to thank you for the 70 years' legacy that we've been in the community, and it's an honor, on behalf of the board and the committee. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Catholic Church. Good morning. Thanks for coming and leading us in prayer.
As we remember the events of 17 years ago, a dark day of our country's history, let us remember the victims, their families, and all first responders, that God give them his peace. Almighty and eternal God, you have revealed your glory to all nations, God of power and might, wisdom and justice. Through the authority which is rightly administered, laws are enacted and judgment is decreed. We pray for his honor, Mayor José Valdés Fóli, his family, for the members of the city commission, their staff and families, for all elected civil officials, especially those in Coral Gables. We ask your special blessings on Chief Hudak, the police, the fire department, and all officers and staff, for first responders who are entrusted to guard our welfare in this fair city. May they be enabled by your powerful protection to discharge their duties with honesty and moral certitude. May this meeting be in company with your most holy will. We likewise commend your unbounded mercy, all citizens of Coral Gables, that we may be blessed in the knowledge and sanctified in the observance of your holy law. May we be preserved in union with that peace which only you can give. Give us your light that will never be extinguished. May be we filled with hope, joy, and charity always. And after enjoying the blessings of this life, be admitted to those which are eternal. We pray to you, who are Lord and God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Monsignor. Thank you very much. And now Commissioner Keon, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we have congratulations to Sarah Espino, who holds the title of Assistant Aquatic Supervisor, recipient of Employee of the Month award for August 2018.
Good morning, Carla Green with the Human Resources Department. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Madam City Attorney, and City Clerk. Today, we're going to be recognizing our employee of the month of August, Sarah Espino, from the Community Development Services Venetian Pool, as our employee of the month of August 2018. Over the past four years, Sarah has spent her time at the Venetian Pool, becoming an integral part of making the pool experience for our guests the best that it can be. She works tirelessly each day to ensure that the pool functions efficiently. She's noted as being continuously on the lookout for maintenance and appearance issues, making sure the pool looks and operates at top performance levels. Sarah is a dedicated employee and is always willing and volunteering to go above and beyond her call of duty. One of her volunteer roles that she has been involved with during the past couple of years is to serve as her team captain at the annual corporate run. Because of her excellence in coordinating the logistics for the large event, it has been and continues to be a great success. For this, many reasons and many more, we wish to congratulate Sarah for having been selected as our employee of the month of August. And now we're going to watch a video.
My name is Fred Cusaro, and I'm the Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Coral Gables, and I would like to congratulate Sarah Espino on being the employee of the month for August 2018. In her employment with the City of Coral Gables, Sarah Espino has become a great supervisor and has excelled at her role at the Venetian Pool. Sarah has taken more additional responsibilities in order to ensure the Venetian Pool functions smoothly. She is consistently proactive with administrative duties and doesn't need supervision to complete her tasks. She is continually on the lookout for any maintenance issues and strives to have the work area look its best. She is loyal to her facility, the department, and the city, and always looks for ways to improve and help those around her. During the new park software transition, Sarah made it her priority to use the pool's downtime to spend as much time as possible with some of the other divisions to help them through the transition. She makes it a point to attend outside aquatic events and facilities, often on her personal time, to stay innovative in the industry. Sarah greatly values integrity and exemplifies every quality as listed in the city's honor code. She makes it her priority to follow all city and facility policies and delivers them in a consistent and fair manner to participants and staff. Sarah is extremely dedicated to her job and takes her role as assistant supervisor very seriously. Sarah is one of the friendliest and most accessible employees and supervisors in the department. With Sarah as a supervisor, it is comforting to know that the Venetian Pool is in good hands and that safety is the number-one priority.
Beautiful. What a wonderful facility, and that engine room, that machine room, was very impressive. If you know where all those equipment is, I congratulate you. Do you want to say a few words? You don't have to, but...
I just want to say, working in Parks and Rec, everybody thinks it's fun and it's great, and it is. Long days, long hours, and weekends away from friends and family. So I want to say thank you to my awesome bosses and my amazing staff, because they make being away from my family that much easier and that much more fun to make sure everybody else is having a good time. So thank you, guys, and I really appreciate the recognition of being employee of the month.
Wonderful, wonderful, and congratulations. Let's have a picture taken. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. She is. Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. She is. I have an on-agenda item, which is that yesterday, our city manager Kathy Swanson Rivenbark presented her resignation as city manager of the City of Coral Gables, and we have a resolution here accepting her resignation and providing for transition. Accepting her resignation, would you read the resolution, Madam City Attorney?
Would you like me to read the content, sir, all of it?
Yeah, read all of it. And it's not only accepting the resolution, but providing for the transition. Would you read it, please?
Yes, sir. It's a resolution accepting the resignation of the city manager and providing for transition. Whereas, city manager Kathy Swanson Rivenbark tendered her resignation effective September 14, 2018. And whereas, at the city commission meeting of September 11, 2018, the city commission accepted her resignation with provision for compensation and transition. And whereas, Ms. Swanson Rivenbark's employment contract is set forth in resolution 2014-249. And whereas, the city attorney has the authority to interpret and provide opinions on behalf of the city regarding resolutions and contracts. And whereas, the city commission wishes to ensure a smooth transition with cooperation from all parties. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city commission of the City of Coral Gables that the foregoing whereas clauses are hereby ratified and confirmed as being true and correct and are hereby made a specific part of this resolution upon adoption thereof, that the resignation by city manager Kathy Swanson Rivenbark is accepted effective September 14, 2018, with provision being made for Ms. Swanson Rivenbark to receive severance as stated in her employment resolution, that assistant city manager Peter Iglesias will serve as interim city manager until such time as either a permanent city manager is appointed or another individual is named interim city manager, whichever occurs first. Peter Iglesias will begin serving in the role of interim city manager on September 11, 2018, but the city manager will remain employed by the city through September 14, 2018. That the city attorney is authorized to interpret and implement this resolution to provide for a cooperation and transition agreement that will ensure the assistance of the prior city manager after September 14, 2018, and that will affect the orderly transition to a new city manager. That this resolution shall become effective upon the date of its passage and adoption herein.
All right, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Keon?
Yes.
Commissioner Lago?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayna?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casada?
Mayor Valdés Fóli.
Yes, thank you very much. And we will go on now to...
We should go on to the regular business, sir.
The regular business, which is...
Interim city manager is joining us on the dais.
Right. You're welcome, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for having faith in me to do this job. I've been a resident of Coral Gables for 40 years. I love the city, and I will try to make you all proud of the city.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Peter, we're blessed to have you here.
We are.
Thank you, Commissioner.
First item is a resolution of the City Commission of Coral Gables expressing its opposition to offshore drilling and exploration activities, including seismic airgun blasting, and making opposition to set activities part of the city's legislative agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, just, you know, I'm very happy you put this on the agenda, because I'm not sure if this organization had reached out to any of my fellow colleagues. I think they probably may have. I know they reached out to me. Did they reach out to you, or no?
I think I forwarded...
Yeah, something. I was confused. I was going to meet with them. So did you get a chance to meet with them and discuss what...
No, I haven't, but I read all of the materials they sent, and I think it's very, very appropriate, especially what happened in the Gulf a while ago.
No, I agree with you. No, I agree. So moved. So, no, no, yours. I just wanted to... I thought it was very important that, you know, this is, we've got to protect our environment. I think this is something that's splendid, and I think it's a great idea. I'm happy that you put it on the agenda.
Will you make a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lago?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayna?
Yes.
Commissioner Keon?
Yes.
Mayor Valdés Fóli.
Yes. And then we go to the consent agenda, D1, 2, 3, and then the boards and committees.
Mr. Clark?
Before the vote adopting the consent agenda is taken, is there anyone who wishes additional discussion or review of any item on the consent agenda?
Robert Roano had reached out to me on D3. He's the head of the Bike Walk Coral Gables, and he had wanted to make some comments. He actually just sent me a text message saying that we're moving a little quicker than usual today, and he's not actually here yet, but that he's on his way.
We can pull D3 and pass the rest of the consent agenda.
I can roll D3 and give him an opportunity to speak. I have no problem with that.
All right.
Perfect.
So everything but D3, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise? Okay, it passed. Ordinance and second reading. F1?
F1 is an ordinance amending Chapter 46 of the Code of the City of Coral Gables, entitled Pensions, amending Section 46253, entitled Normal Retirement Income, to provide the same retroactive cost-of-living adjustment and alternative dispute resolution mechanism to former city employees who opted out of the class in the Merhe versus City of Coral Gables case, as is provided to members of the certified class, providing for repealer provisions, severability clause, codification, and providing for an effective date. This resolution is on second reading. It is a public hearing item. This ordinance, I apologize.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Sir, it's a public hearing item. I don't know if anybody's present.
Anybody wishes to speak on these four individuals? Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Keon.
So moved.
Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Keon?
Yes.
Commissioner Lago?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayna?
Yes.
Mayor Valdés Fóli.
Yes, F2, scooters?
F2 is an ordinance of the City of Coral Gables, Florida, amending Chapter 74, Traffic and Vehicles of the City of Coral Gables Code, in order to authorize use of motor scooters on certain city sidewalks, providing for repealer provision, severability clause, and providing for an effective date. This is also on second reading, and it's a public hearing item.
There have been no changes since first reading.
I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Peter?
Madam City Attorney, I think we were going to allow to control the speed on the...
Yeah, so I think we're going to do that in the MOU, but not in the ordinance itself? Are those the conversations you had?
Madam City Attorney, it is mentioned in the ordinance. If you look in Chapter, Section 74, 239, it restricts it to a maximum speed of 15 miles per hour. Speeds below that could be arranged in any memorandums of understanding, but state statutes sets the maximum at 15 miles per hour, which we've reflected in the ordinance.
Have the ability of lowering that if necessary.
We can do it in the MOU. We can also do it in the ordinance if that's what the commission wishes to do. Both options are available.
I think we should do it in the MOU, since, you know, it takes thought, and there'll be discussion, and whatever.
So the ceiling is 15 in the ordinance, but it can be less by agreement in the MOU.
But I like the ability to have, and Mayor, if I may, I like the ability to have a little bit of flexibility, so if we do encounter an issue or a problem, whatever that may be, that we have the flexibility, and we don't have to come back to the commission, that staff has the understanding that they can move in that direction if possible.
Right.
Or required, more like it.
So we'll work on it in the MOU.
Okay.
Okay. That's been moved. Second, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Keon?
Yes.
Commissioner Lago?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayna?
Yes.
Mayor Valdés Fóli?
Yes. And then we go to the consent agenda, D1, 2, 3, and then the boards and committees.
Mr. Clark?
Before the vote adopting the consent agenda is taken, is there anyone who wishes additional discussion or review of any item on the consent agenda?
Robert Roano had reached out to me on D3. He's the head of the Bike Walk Coral Gables, and he had wanted to make some comments. He actually just sent me a text message saying that we're moving a little quicker than usual today, and he's not actually here yet, but that he's on his way.
We can pull D3 and pass the rest of the consent agenda.
I can roll D3 and give him an opportunity to speak. I have no problem with that.
All right.
Perfect.
So everything but D3, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise? Okay, it passed. Ordinance and second reading. F1?
F1 is an ordinance amending Chapter 46 of the Code of the City of Coral Gables, entitled Pensions, amending Section 46253, entitled Normal Retirement Income, to provide the same retroactive cost-of-living adjustment and alternative dispute resolution mechanism to former city employees who opted out of the class in the Merhe versus City of Coral Gables case, as is provided to members of the certified class, providing for repealer provisions, severability clause, codification, and providing for an effective date. This resolution is on second reading. It is a public hearing item. This ordinance, I apologize.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Sir, it's a public hearing item. I don't know if anybody's present.
Anybody wishes to speak on these four individuals? Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Keon.
So moved.
Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Keon?
Yes.
Commissioner Lago?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayna?
Yes.
Mayor Valdés Fóli.
Yes, F2, scooters?
F2 is an ordinance of the City of Coral Gables, Florida, amending Chapter 74, Traffic and Vehicles of the City of Coral Gables Code, in order to authorize use of motor scooters on certain city sidewalks, providing for repealer provision, severability clause, and providing for an effective date. This is also on second reading, and it's a public hearing item.
There have been no changes since first reading.
I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Peter?
Madam City Attorney, I think we were going to allow to control the speed on the...
Yeah, so I think we're going to do that in the MOU, but not in the ordinance itself? Are those the conversations you had?
Madam City Attorney, it is mentioned in the ordinance. If you look in Chapter, Section 74, 239, it restricts it to a maximum speed of 15 miles per hour. Speeds below that could be arranged in any memorandums of understanding, but state statutes sets the maximum at 15 miles per hour, which we've reflected in the ordinance.
Have the ability of lowering that if necessary.
We can do it in the MOU. We can also do it in the ordinance if that's what the commission wishes to do. Both options are available.
I think we should do it in the MOU, since, you know, it takes thought, and there'll be discussion, and whatever.
So the ceiling is 15 in the ordinance, but it can be less by agreement in the MOU.
But I like the ability to have, and Mayor, if I may, I like the ability to have a little bit of flexibility, so if we do encounter an issue or a problem, whatever that may be, that we have the flexibility, and we don't have to come back to the commission, that staff has the understanding that they can move in that direction if possible.
Right.
Or required, more like it.
So we'll work on it in the MOU.
Okay.
Okay. That's been moved. Second, will you call the roll, please?
Sir, I'm not sure if anybody here is wanting to speak.
Anybody wishes to speak on this? Okay, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Keon?
Yes.
Commissioner Lago?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayna?
Yes.
Mayor Valdés Fóli?
Yes. F3?
F3 is an ordinance of the City Commission of Coral Gables, approving the vacation of a public alleyway pursuant to zoning code Article 3, Division 12, abandonment and vacations, and city code Chapter 62, Article 8, vacation, abandonment, enclosure of streets, easements, and alleys by private owners in the city. Application process, providing for a vacation of the 20-foot-wide alley, which is 270 feet in length, lying between lots 38 through 48, 1 through 10, and a portion of Lot 11, and the dedication of substitute perpetual access and utility easement on Lot 38 in Block 20, Coral Gables, Section K, 2151 Salcedo Street, Coral Gables, Florida, providing for repealer provisions, severability clause, and providing for an effective date. This is on second reading, and it's a public hearing item.
This is the alley road for the construction of the townhouse.
I'll move it.
Second?
It's a public hearing, Adam.
It's a public hearing. Any comments? Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lago?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayna?
Yes.
Commissioner Keon?
Yes.
Mayor Valdés Fóli?
Yes. Will you, Peter, will you instruct us on what the county is trying to do to us with the alleys?
They are trying to look at alleys as streets. It's something that we're working with them, because an alley is not, in our opinion, is a service corridor. And if we look at alleys as streets, then we don't park semi-trailers on a street and unload semi-trailers. So we are looking, I think it's a bit of an overreach as far as alleys is concerned, and we're working with them concerning that.
Okay.
Alleys are not streets to us. They're service corridors, and that's the intent.
And that's their use. I mean, yeah.
Their use.
Okay. Motion and second? It's a public hearing.
It may pass.
Okay. F4?
F4 is an ordinance of the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida, amending the city code, Chapter 2, entitled Administration, Article 8, entitled Procurement Code, by amending Section 2-607 exemptions, to include a notification requirement for contracts over a certain amount, providing for repealer provision, severability clause, and providing for an effective date. This is, there was a change between first and second. This was regarding the authority to hire consultants. The initial ordinance was for it to come on the next commission agenda. Now it states that the city manager will notify the commission within seven days of the effective date of the contract if it is procured under that exemption.
Mayor, if I may, just very briefly, again, this is just about simple notifications and having controls in place where we can be as efficient as possible with the taxpayer money. Commissioner Keon brought up a very good point. Why don't we just, why don't we look at somewhere in the middle where the commission will be notified and will be made responsible of any contracts that are being considered or that are being enacted by the city manager that fall within a certain threshold? So I mentioned seven days. I leave it up to my colleagues, but I wanted to just make sure that everybody was perfectly fine. fine. This is just about more transparency in public government, which I think is, again, we can never have enough transparency.
And again, to clarify, this is only for contracts that are procured under the consultant exception in the procurement code.
All right.
I'll move it.
Second?
Will you call the roll, please?
It is a public hearing item.
Everybody? Call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mayna?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada? I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Keon?
Yes.
Commissioner Olago?
Yes.
Mayor Valdez Swally?
Yes. Next.
Item F5 is an ordinance of the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida, amending Section 10596, Chapter 105, Article 3 of the City of Coral Gables Code, to add demolition to the enumerated emergency action that may be ordered or taken by the building official in connection with an unsafe structure, providing for repealer, repealer provision, severability clause, codification, and providing for an effective date. This is an ordinance on first reading. It is a public hearing item, and the deputy city attorney is present to brief you.
Good morning. This would be an amendment to the city's unsafe structure ordinance. It would authorize the building, expressly authorize the building official to order demolition in emergency situations. So we've had a few emergency situations of, not a few, I'm sorry, we've had maybe one emergency situation where the building official, we believe the circumstance has warranted ordering demolition, but now we're making an express action that the building official can take, which is consistent with other cities, such as City of Miami, that have it expressly in their ordinance.
Any comments? This is a public hearing. Any, anybody wishes to speak? All right, will you call the roll, please?
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Keon?
Yes.
Commissioner Olago?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayna?
Yes.
Mayor Valdez Swally?
Yes. F6?
F6 is a resolution of the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida, approving the final plat, entitled Biltmore Park Homes, pursuant to zoning code Article 3, Division 9, plating subdivision being a replat of an approximately .93 acre property into 15 platted lots for 15 residential townhomes. On property assigned multifamily special area district zoning for the property legally described as lots 1, 2, and 18 through 23, Block 11, Biltmore, Section 760 Valencia, 2605, 2611, 2615 Anderson Road, 731, 735, 743 Almira Avenue, Coral Gables, Florida, providing for an effective date. This is a resolution, but it is a public hearing item.
Public, any, any comments?
I maybe want to hear from staff. Does Ramon or Donna have any comments, or, or Peter, or Ed in reference to what we're going to?
This plat is to create a townhouse for townhouse construction, townhouse construction in the whole process of the, of the visual walls, and what this is, it's a plat that provides, that's why I'm having an impact because of accessibility to the project.
Did we notify, thank you, did we notify the residents of the area properly in regards to making sure that nobody had any objections?
Yes, we did notify it, and I did get one email objecting to it in, in general. However, what I would say to you is that this, this project is allowed in, in terms of the proper zoning and so on. The replating is just simply, basically the last step on, on the process.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
You know, to put it for the record, because eventually, you know, one day someone pops up and says, you know, there wasn't public comment, you didn't notify the neighbors, and I wanted to make sure that everybody's been notified accordingly.
Yeah, in addition, it did go to plan and zoning in.
Yeah. Okay, perfect.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Keon?
Yes.
Commissioner Olago?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayna?
Yes.
Mayor Valdez Swally?
Yes. City Commission, anything on, the City Commission items?
One item.
Okay.
I'd like to see if our parking director's here. I know we're moving rather expeditiously today, so. Okay. Give me one second. I just, I wanted to get an update in regards to our migration of the parking code from the county to the city, kind of see what we are today. Caught you off guard, huh, Kevin? You didn't expect us to be moving so quickly?
No.
We'll be through not before lunch, but at this speed before breakfast.
Actually, I was just speaking with the IT director about this very topic. We are in the process of reviewing, at this point, four different technology companies that will help kind of take us into the future. In fact, we have one scheduled, a presentation scheduled on Friday. And we'll evaluate the different systems. We're looking for a system that not only will take care of the enforcement issues that we're talking about, one of the companies, in fact, that we're talking about is proposing that we go completely, enforcement completely with LPR. And it's an intriguing idea, and we're evaluating it. We have one more after the meeting on Friday that we're going to meet with. And at that point, between IT reviewing the technology and parking reviewing the operation plans, we'll begin to make a selection of, of who we're going to go with.
So in reference to what we voted on, the, the item that I put forth, I think it was, how many months ago was it?
It was June?
I believe the second reading was in June. First reading in May, second reading in June.
Have we been having discussions with the county, so we can already commence?
Uh, we have initial discussions.
I know that we're looking for technology, you know, to implement the actual, you know, migration of the parking code from the county to the city, but I want to understand, are we already, I want to run concurrently that we're, that we're talking with the county and we're saying, okay, we're going to be moving, we're filling out the necessary paperwork, we're building the infrastructure.
We haven't given them the notice, because we want to know what the timeline for our system is before we give them notice, but they are aware. In fact, the most recent conversation I've had with them, they indicated to me that their, I don't know if they called it their reading.
But why are we tying this, why are we tying up so many, you know, loose ends? Why don't we, why don't we just migrate first? Migrate first? I know that maybe you may need a little bit more additional manpower.
Because the county doesn't want us to migrate.
I know, I know, I know the county doesn't want it, but I'm saying, why can't we just migrate over and then look for new technology later?
Because at that point, we would have people writing handwritten citations.
What do we do right now?
We use the county system.
I know, but I mean...
And it's electronic. It, it actually, I mean, it's very efficient.
What would happen is we would lose the county system, so we would have no system.
I got it. But it's, but it's, we're already, we're already halfway through almost September. So what I, what I don't want to see, and I just, I'm not picking on you, I'm picking on the parking department, I just want, I don't want to be talking about this in January or in February, in March. If you're having hurdles with the county, if you're having hurdles with...
No, the hurdles are not with the county.
You need assistance from the commission, if you need assistance from the commission to help you in this endeavor.
We, we feel as though we need to have a system in place so we can deal with appeals, so we can deal with collections or scofflaws. Right now, if, if I sent the notice to the county and we moved, we would have handwritten citations.
I understand that.
And, and that would be not only inefficient, I'm not sure how we would manage the appeal process. I'm not sure how we would...
So let's, let's work on a timeline. Okay. So in the last four months, we've identified four firms. You're meeting with the first one this Friday.
No, this is actually the third one we've met with.
Okay, third, perfect.
We met with one, one company with the mayor, there's another company we've met with, and so we've, after Friday, three of the four we've met with.
Perfectly fine. When can we hopefully, you know, have everything put together so that we can choose a firm, maybe do an RFQ, whatever has to be done, you know, go to the public, find the best firm, so we can, I want to put a goal, so we can say, okay, January, February, March, what, what do you feel comfortable saying that we're going to be able to deliver on this system and be on our own two feet away from the county?
Kevin, keep in mind the dates to terminate all of those different agreements.
It takes at least 90, we have to give a 90-day notice to the county. I don't feel comfortable giving that day without talking to Ramundo, just because there is...
Is Ramundo here? Ramundo, come on over here.
I mean, it will take time. They're experienced in putting in new systems for everybody in the city, and it doesn't happen overnight.
No, I, I understand that it doesn't happen overnight, and, and trust me, very impressed with some of the things that, you know, our, our staff is doing. For example, I enjoyed the free Wi-Fi today on Hidalda this morning when I was having breakfast. I mean, that's the first time I've been able to enjoy that. That's, that's a great, you know, amenity that we offer to people who are, you know, enjoying our city. But this is something where if I don't put a timeline on it, two years from now, it won't get done. And I want to make sure that you have all the tools to get this done.
Well, I can tell you that the conversations with the county have, to the, to date, have been, you're going to get a notice soon, as soon as we figure out.
But it's okay, but it's perfectly fine, but let's get a notice.
Okay.
But let's work, let's work towards...
But I, I guess the question that I would want input from IT on is, once we select the system, we have to, I'm not sure all of what's involved, but we have to put our code into the new system. We have to put our operations into the new system. And I think those activities, it took you almost a year with Parks and Rec. I don't think it would be that long for us, but...
Depend, good morning, Commissioners, Mayor. Depending on the technology that will be selected, if the technology that we will be using to integrate with the county system is the same system that you're currently using for the permits, so maybe it would be easier just adding another capability to the current system. If it's going to be a different system, then we need to go through the procurement process. And so that's, there are different options, depending on what technology we will select for the implementation.
Commissioner, can we give you a timeline for the next commission meeting? Because we have IT, we have parking, and we have to deal with the city attorney's office concerning, concerning the, the citations. We'll give you a complete timeline.
And not only that, I imagine you need to deal also with procurement, because procurement's got to tell you exactly how long the RFQ process is, you know, there's going to be, obviously, it's going to be done in the open. We're going to have to open it so that as many companies who can provide this service provide their information, and then we make a decision, or some selection committee makes a decision.
Kevin, also, I think you had mentioned needing a full-time employee in order to run the appeals and all of that. Is that still the case?
Yes. There, there will need to be somebody to run the appeals process.
So HR also.
So what I'd like to see, maybe we can swing over this commission item for the next commission meeting.
Okay.
And I'd like to see at that point, like the manager, like Peter mentioned, a schedule of some sort, which, which encompasses not only procurement, IT, parking, legal, because obviously you said we're going to get a notice, but if we don't get the ball rolling, you know, first off, the county won't take us seriously, and because they think that we're not going to pull the trigger on, on, on this. And I didn't waste time doing the research and bringing forth this legislation and getting it passed, because the amount of money is significant that the city's going to, going to make here.
It is.
It's going to save, it's going to be a lot of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe a million dollars a year. And the whole point is, why should the county make that money when we're doing all the legwork and we're doing...
And the county has also passed a resolution, or they have decided not to increase the parking fine rates.
Actually, sir, they passed on first, and now it's at a, at the committee level. It hasn't gone on second yet, so they may still increase them. We don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah, but they passed first not to increase them.
Right now, the clerk is anticipating that it will go to the county commission in September. At this point in time, that's what they're anticipating.
My issue is, we're doing all the legwork and we're not reaping the benefits of it. So I just want to make sure staff works on this, and I appreciate all your efforts, and let's put it on the next agenda, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. That takes care of item H1, which is that item, city manager items? No?
City attorney.
City attorney items?
Item K1 is a discussion regarding the adoption of a policy establishing procedures for the creation of a new special taxing district and amendments to existing special taxing districts. This came up because as these special taxing districts migrated over to the city, we found ourselves in a position where one or two members of a special taxing district might have a particular desire to amend the ordinance to provide for services. But it was difficult for now the city commission, as the governing body of these special taxing districts, to know they were speaking with one voice, or if this was one or two people that wanted a change, and how we were going to manage that. So the thought from our office was to step back, create a policy for your consideration and adoption, and then that's how we would move forward with changes. The first part, and I'll let Assistant City Attorney Sabios, who drafted the policy, take you through it, but the first part really just talks about the creation, which is essentially the county process. The focus for us is the second part, which is what you all want to happen when we're amending a district.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners, Assistant City Attorney Gus Sabios. I believe the city attorney basically gave you a brief overview of exactly what the policy is before you. The entire first part is basically a copy of the county, that is, the creation process. The creation process still exists with the county. We have no control over it. We are in discussion about how we would be involved in terms of a letter of support, but that's not really part of this policy. The main purpose of this policy is the second part, which we are addressing, the amendment process of the taxing districts, once they are transferred over from the county. The first step we had set forth is basically a letter of intent. We increased the percentage of homeowners required to be on this letter of intent from 10% to 20%. The 10% is what the county was particularly using. Once we received that letter of intent, the city would go ahead and create a petition, a petition. The petition would basically delineate the changes and the proposed amendment to the special taxing district. Then that petition would go back out for votes of support from the actual homeowners. We set forth three categories, if you will. The first category is if they did not achieve 50% support, basically the motion would die, nothing would continue. The second option would be if they received anywhere between 50 and 80% of the support. These numbers are numbers that we just are proffering. We, we're welcome to any sort of suggestion that you may have. Basically, anything between 50 and 80% would follow a very similar procedure to Miami-Dade County, which is it would then be set for an election, and the ballots would be sent through mail ballot, and you would go through the same procedure you would if you were doing a, creating a new special taxing district. The third option would be if there was overwhelming support for this modification of this amendment, we're proffering, I said, 80%. If there is more than 80% support, the election process would not be required. It would come back before the commission, and the commission could approve it administratively. That is basically the proposed policy. If you have any questions or any suggestions. Also, I should note, I just handed you a minor, two minor changes from the item that had been posted with the agenda originally back last week. I'm going to read those into the record. Under 4B, we've added a subsection 4, which reads, "The election will be conducted by mail ballot by either Miami-Dade County Election Department or by the city's clerks, as to be determined by the city. Any costs associated with the election will be the financial responsibility of the existing special taxing district, regardless if the amendment passes or fails." And one note for further clarification, all the way at the bottom of the document, it says, "This amendment process will be for significant changes of service as determined by the city. Cost recovery is not considered an amendment, and any increases in the assessment that are due to increases in the cost of service will not go through an amendment process and will be completed by the city administratively." We also have our consultant here today. If you have any questions for him as well, I'm sure he'd be more than happy to answer them.
I think it's very logical and very democratic, and I think it allows the people the opportunity to be heard, and yet allows the majority, the supermajority, the opportunity to pass it. Any motions?
It speaks for itself. I'll make a motion.
Moved, it's been moved and seconded. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Olago?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayna?
Yes.
Commissioner Keon?
Yes.
Mayor Valdez Swally?
Yes. And we go back to the consent agenda, item D3.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize. Can I address the board on this, this item?
Yeah, please.
I appreciate it. Jerry Proctor, attorney, representing Cocoa Plum Phase 1. I'm joined by Hector Fortun, who's the president of our association. We appreciate the time and effort of the city staff, the city attorney's office and staff. Appreciate the time that the mayor and Commissioner Lago have given us, and we are very appreciative of the standards, and they give us a roadmap going forward. We have just a couple of comments and questions at this point that we'd like to put forward. Number one, in terms of the overwhelming support part of what Mr. Sabayos mentioned, the 80%, we would like to ask the mayor and commission to establish something that might be in the 65% or two-thirds range for that overwhelming support. It's very difficult to find property owners and homeowners at certain times of the year, really any time for certain homeowners. We have absentee owners that do not live in Miami for most or all of the year, and we believe we have support for what we're trying to do, and if we don't, we won't succeed anyway. But we would ask for your consideration of that, that change. The second comment goes a little bit beyond your report, and I put it out respectfully because we don't have much time before the fiscal year, starting October 1. We have, at the moment, historically, off-duty Gables police serving our community 16 hours a day. Because the districts as a whole have been assumed by the city, we understand that that is no longer possible, that those officers would have to be in an overtime status.
The IRS has rules compelling that, yes.
As well as a Fair Labor Standards Act, sir.
Pardon me?
As well as a Fair Labor Standards Act.
We, we would like to, if, to the extent possible, work with the city and have off-duty police, or overtime police, as you might call them, serve, continue to serve as much as possible in these next 12 months while we look at expansion and other things down the road. I don't know how much of that is possible at this point, but we would like to work with the mayor and commission, and as I said, and I appreciate you giving me the time, we only have three weeks until the beginning of the new era of Gables service and the transition, and we, we like the off-duty officers. They know us, they know the city, they are there in case of a true emergency.
Man, city attorney, who would they have to meet with and negotiate with to take care of their concerns or to discuss their concerns?
So, the consultant, I believe, is present, and, and is understanding of the concerns because we, we've heard them before.
And I think the 66, or, you know, the two-thirds requirement is a logical one, given absences and whatever, so.
So if we wanted to reduce to 65?
Shall we instruct them to meet with a consultant?
So two, two separate issues. The off-duty issue, I don't know if the finance director wants to address the commission about that and what the plan is. I think that's important. On the 65%, it would be essentially a motion for reconsideration to your previous motion because we just passed the policy with 80.
Would you make a motion to reconsider, to, to thirds?
So moved. This is one of the items that we have been discussing multiple meetings.
Okay, will you, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Keon?
Yes.
Commissioner Lago?
Yes.
Mayor Valdez-Walley.
Yes.
So the policy will be amended to show 65% instead of 80% for a supermajority, 66%.
Thank you.
And on the off-duty police and whatever, who is our consultant?
Sir, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Good morning, my name is Paul Winklejohn from Governmental Management Services.
Why don't you negotiate with him or discuss it with him and bring it to us at the next city commission meeting, which is two weeks from now, and we will discuss it then. We're looking very favorably, I mean, we want to do the right thing, and there is a change, so we'd love to please discuss it.
So from a legal standpoint, we definitely cannot have off-duty officers. We can have overtime officers. In terms of how we're addressing it so that you're fully covered, I wanted the finance director to address.
Good, good morning. So on Thursday, we do have a public hearing regarding this that sets the rate. We have already set the maximum rate that can be charged, so that is set. We cannot change that. We can only go down from there. We cannot increase it. We have been working with the budget to make sure that what is the maximum amount of hours for off, for overtime of police officers that we can provide, and we cannot increase the money, the amount that we're assessing in order to give them more hours. As I sent in that memo that I sent out earlier, last week, I think it was, currently, the county is providing eight hours of off-duty police officers and nothing more. That's a change that the county had recently made. We will be providing six hours of overtime officers and then 10 hours of private security because the ordinance, as it reads right now, requires 16 hours of security coverage. So we are enhancing services in that we are going to provide 16 hours per day as required by the ordinance. It's just six of those will be at the overtime rate, and then the rest of them will be with the security guards because we can, we can fit that into the budget at that hybrid solution. If the, the process increases the, if the process changes that they want, that the Phase 1 wants to increase the assessment for the subsequent year, we can then charge more in order to cover more of the hours with overtime. We just can't do it at this point. The increase, it would, it would double, even more than double the current assessment. We could, after we transition, put an election out there to say, "Do you want to absorb that cost?", and then we can start, and they know that they would have to increase next year to even cover this year's overages. So there's things that we can do after we transition. It's just, right now, the, the best, for 10-1 cut-over, we feel that the best is to provide the 16 hours of services with a hybrid of security guard as well as overtime police because of this FLSA.
Why don't you discuss it with him, with them, and then bring it to the next city commission?
We have.
Okay.
Suggestion, just a comment. Is there any way that, that the homeowners association can contract the police officers directly, therefore avoid, because we were paying regular rates, all of a sudden with less than 30 days, we're notified that we're losing our protection, and we have to use private security for half the time, and our rates are going up 50%. So we understand that there are federal laws, and, you know, it's not anyone's particular fault, but we're in the, in this predicament. So if there's a way that we can, as a homeowners association, receive the funds and pay the police directly?
I think you can do that.
And avoid this, if there's any solution like that, we'd, we'd love to, for you to explore it.
So we looked at that option. The problem is that it's essentially still city dollars paying for a city employee. So it doesn't pass the FLSA test, the Fair Labor Standards test. If the homeowners association on their own wants to hire off-duty officers with their money, not with the special taxing district's money, they of course have every right to do that, as can anyone for a private event, for example. But we cannot use them as a pass-through. We looked at different options, and unfortunately, the law just doesn't let us do it.
But the homeowners are paying for this protection. It's being charged to each homeowner. You guys are basically conduit for collecting the money.
Right, so once it came over.
It is our money, it's not city money.
Once it came over to the city from the county, we become the employer of the, we are the employers of those Coral Gables police officers, and we are then duty-bound to pay them overtime, not off-duty under the Fair Labor Standards Act because now it's the same employer. Even if we pass the money through you and you pay them, we're still the same employer. That's the issue.
Why don't you, instead of negotiating it here, why don't you get together and come before us at the next meeting? And we'll take you up early in the meeting.
I just want to make clear, though, sir, that there's really not room for negotiation. We can talk about, we can talk about hours, we can talk about amending the ordinance going forward to have them have more services if that's what they wish, but in terms of negotiating what they want, unfortunately, I don't, I haven't found a way for them to do it at this point.
Okay, thank you.
We're just trying to keep what we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Bicycle Roberto Rano, D3 consent agenda.
Good morning.
Sir, good morning.
Mayor Commissioners. Thank you, thank you, by the way, Commissioner Mena and the, the commission for, for moving this forward. You're going really fast today.
You're lucky, you're very lucky. In a typical commission meeting, your item would have come up at 3:00 PM or something like that, so you're very lucky.
Yeah, Robert Rano, 1544 Mercia Avenue. As Commissioner Mena actually stated, I am the chair of Biqo Coral Gables, but today I'm speaking on my own, on behalf of myself, because I have not had time to, to speak to the board on this. I just wanted to talk about that, that SMART Plan grant, and first, I want to say, I commend the city for applying for these grant dollars that are out there to, to improve the bicycle and walking network. But I would like to say, at least put on the record, that the city has, did a plan and paid, I believe at the time it was $50,000 in 2004, a bike plan. In 2014, they did another bike plan, paid quite a bit more. And then now there is an intramodal plan that is currently working, and then now we have the SMART grant, which is another plan or another study. And I think that we really need to start acting. There are a lot, particularly, there's a lot of good things on that 2014 plan, a lot of good corridors that could really make a network or, or at least fix the connections. But even in this, in this grant and in this, in this proposal, I see the same comments from the 2014. These are these areas where we could fix. We really need to start acting on these. I hope, according to, according to, to the resolution, this is going to take six months, but I hope that we're not going to, to slow down or stop any of the other implementations because of any other plan. We have a lot of data, we've had a lot of community support, a lot of community input. I think it's time to act on these and start spending those monies. Secondly.
So Robert, before, if I interject for just one second. So I want to kind of qualify your statement because you're saying that we should and we haven't. So can you give me an example of why you think we haven't implemented some of the low-hanging fruit that we, that we should have taken care of already that just keeps coming up over and over and over again in these studies? And again, if we, if we move forward with the TPO's grant money and we actually do another study, it's going to say again, for a fourth time, that we should implement X, Y, and Z. Can you just give me a quick reason why you think it hasn't been done?
Sure.
Maybe it's political, maybe the residents don't want it in certain areas. You have an opportunity to educate us as, as a person who's an expert in this field, who has a lot of knowledge more than I do. Tell me why you think it hasn't been done.
Well, what, do you want to know first what the, the opportunities are or why it hasn't been done?
No, why it hasn't been done.
Okay, why it hasn't been done, and, and it says there that, it says actually in the, in the, I believe in the application, that the problem is right-of-way, we have narrow right-of-way in, in many cases. I believe, quite frankly, that the biggest reason it hasn't been done is there hasn't been political will, enough political will.
Tell me about the, pursuing your line of thought, Riviera experience. We had 50 out of 52 residents from Riviera here opposing it. It was amazing.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a reason why that wasn't done? There is not the political will, but it's not our political will, it's a resident's will.
Can I tell you something? And I mentioned at the time, Riviera was not something that our group, that, that particular area was not something that our group even proposed. It was proposed by a group of two people, but, but I think, but I think that even in the group.
If I could just add something really quick to the mayor's comments, I just don't want that to be brushed aside. That was pretty impactful.
Very.
Very impactful. When you're trying to do something for the community and then you have that many people come out opposing it, and by the way, I was in favor, and I thought it was, I just couldn't vote against what 50 residents or 50-plus residents are saying. I mean, to me, it made sense.
I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak on that because I will tell you, Riviera, there was a lot of misinformation, and I knew some people that lived on, on Riviera, and they were being, they were being contacted and said, "You see this wonderful swale that you have here? You see these trees? They're going to knock down these trees, they're going to put a big path. You don't want that." So there was a lot of misinformation going to the residents of Riviera. In, in general, yes, there was a lot of opposition from the residents because there was a very organized group of residents that said, you know, "They're going to really, they're really going to get rid of our street, they're going to rid of our right-of-way, we're going to have bikes all over here." And obviously, it's a lot, as you know, it's a lot easier to oppose something than to propose something or support something, and you'll get a lot more people out here opposing something. But I will say on the Riviera, I think that, and I have told some of you individually, I, I think that the commission made a mistake on Riviera because it really should have gone back to the staff, and the, the staff should have had an opportunity to sit down with the residents and try to educate them on the reality. Riviera, for example, with a very simple striping, would have decreased those Saturday morning cyclists because they would have to have gone on the bike lane. Now they can go all over that street. If they had a bike lane, they would have had to stay in the bike lane. That's number one. Number two, it has been proven that if you do striping and you narrow the roadway, you're going to get people going slower. So they were actually, the Riviera residents were actually arguing against something that was going to help the problem that they had, okay? And I think that if they had just had the opportunity to sit down with staff and been educated on that, I think it would have been different. It would have gone a little bit differently, okay?
But I, 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 in reference to staff, because you made several points, I think staff had multiple discussions with residents, did their best, but at the end of the day, it was, you don't think you had any discussion at all?
No.
You think we won't stand up here? I just.
We didn't give them the opportunity to have that discussion. We just said no.
Oh, they had a public meeting.
If you want to bring it up again, whoever brings it up.
How can we just say that we didn't have discussions with staff, and then we had public meetings? So then what would that be? We didn't have one public meeting.
There's different things.
So we had one or two public meetings?
I wasn't, I didn't come completely prepared to talk about Riviera Drive today.
I think it's important to talk about it. We have time today, so it's a good thing. We have time, and, you know, this is important.
We have seven hours.
We'll speak a little bit about this.
Take advantage of it.
Mr. Rano made some very good points, and staff did not have the opportunity to sit down and educate the residents along Riviera Drive or any other streets in the city of Coral Gables. If we go back in time, when all of this began last year, we had a series of open houses. And from that point in time, we were supposed to have smaller neighborhood groups so that we could educate each community on the opportunities that bicycling infrastructure would provide. And that was stopped following the Riviera Drive, the, the community that came here the day when the commission voted to no longer support bike infrastructure on Riviera Drive.
And, okay, there was two public meetings, though, shortly before that, right? Including one at the library?
It were open houses, yes.
Open houses. And there were Riviera residents at, at least the second of those.
Yes, there were Riviera residents. Staff actually did reach out to the community, and we did request to sit down with that community to educate them, and they did not take that opportunity. They did not want to speak.
They weren't interested.
That's correct.
Right, it's not, it's not, so I think that's an important distinction, like, you know.
They were opposed.
It's not that we cut off that opportunity for dialogue, it's that they didn't want a dialogue, and they made that abundantly clear, and for a lot of reasons, some which were fair and some which were unfair.
Right, and, and I think also we, there was a significant amount of misinformation that was distributed. I did see some of the information that was distributed, and staff did not comment on any of that.
Right.
Can I, can I make a point, a very important point, I think? We're not discussing Riviera here, we're not opening Riviera.
Yes.
We're not, please go on, and let's get away from Riviera.
Okay. Commissioner Lago, to your, to your point, there is a section on Alhambra between Coral Way and Salzado, Segovia, no, Sevilla, sorry. All the S's are confusing me here. Okay, there's a two-block section there where the road is very narrow, okay? You have a bike lane on, on Alhambra, and then you have a bike lane on Sevilla, okay? Two-block section, extremely, extremely narrow. If a bike, if a cyclist goes on there with a car, it can be very dangerous. That is one spot that has been mentioned on the 2014 plan and is being mentioned now. There is a section on Segovia where you have the bike lane and then Alhambra bike lane.
Should Keon ask your question, sorry.
Why did you, it's too narrow, so what was the?
What's the remedy?
Yeah, that street is very narrow.
The remedy, the remedy could be, could be just expanding the road just a little bit and making a bike lane to connect Alhambra to.
Expanding the road and, in essence, taking away from the swale, correct?
Yes.
I want to be very clear.
The swale and the middle, the, the, the middle of the, the median, I'm sorry, the median, which is beautiful trees, beautiful.
Well, no, no, there's no median there, sir, I'm sorry. This is Alhambra. Alhambra from Coral Way to Sevilla.
Okay.
You get, it's going north and south.
Okay.
There's no median there. So you would, you would, yes, you would expand the road a bit to, to accommodate bike lanes, but then you would have people that could come from the west, that are coming in through our city, that could bike on Sevilla, and instead of having a bike lane that stops at the church, you're basically making a left and then connecting all the way down Alhambra to the downtown.
And again, I'm not a cyclist, so I'm, I'm asking questions that you may think are ridiculous, but is that a main thoroughfare for people who are biking through our city? And have we encountered issues where there's been accidents, potential accidents?
Yeah, there's been a lot of potential accidents that I've seen. I don't know, I haven't measured if there's, have been accidents there, and there hasn't been, there's, it's almost the chicken and the egg. There's not a lot of, of users, but there's, it's not a safe place to go, so people aren't going to use it. So they're going to find another, another route.
So you're saying if you build it, they will come?
Yes, if you build a safe, a safe network, and particularly a protected network, people will use it, and you will get cars off the street, which is ultimately your goal. I'm not a cyclist really either. I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm not those Saturday morning people. I'm just trying to make, I'm just trying to help the traffic and get people out on the road and have an alternative mode.
The problem with that with the neighbors is that you would take away their swale.
You, you would not take away their swale because you need the swale for the drain, but you would cut their swale a bit.
And for the possibility of people bicycling to work from outside of Coral Gables, I see that as a difficult proposition.
Well, well, I think that's going to, ultimately, you're not going to solve the traffic, traffic problem if you're not going to give them alternate, alternate modes to get into town, okay? Because there are a lot of cars going in and out of, out of the city, and this is a way to start getting people out of their cars, okay? Commissioner, to yours, the other one was on Segovia. Segovia, between Segovia and Alhambra, actually, there's a spot there where the circles are. There's a, there's no connection there, and that's also mentioned in this plan, too, okay? What you're going to get, it's always not in my backyard. People are going to love these plans, they're going to love, you know, the idea of a bike network, of a walking network, but when it goes, like, as, as the mayor says, when it says, "Oh, my swale's going to be reduced by three feet," then you're going to get people to say, "Well, you know, I like my swale," you know, or, or you're going to put in a sidewalk where I don't have a sidewalk. "Well, I like my sidewalk." But that's where the, the political will comes in.
Right.
The political will and the political necessity of listening to the neighbors.
When you had 50 out of 52 Riviera neighbors here, and I go back to Riviera, and I'm sorry, I said I wasn't going to, but, you know, we have to listen to them.
Yes, sir, and.
So it's not our political will, it's, we are elected to represent them, and.
Yes, sir, but you also have staff that you've hired to be professionals, so that in that case, the commission can certainly say, you know, "I, I agree with your, your point, I see your point, but let's sit down with staff, let's have an education, let's really see what this really, really is about, and then maybe come back and find a way that works for everybody."
So you think that's where we fell short as a commission?
I do.
Okay.
I didn't come here to say that, but I do.
Again, that's why I'm asking. I don't have a problem admitting it. That's why, that's the purpose. I mean, we're not, I'm not a cyclist, so, so at the end of the day, you know, when I asked you to come and speak and ask you questions, now because we're here to grandstandings because we're here to actually learn from mistakes that we may have made in the past, and, you know, maybe, maybe we should have done that. Maybe we should have spoken with, with the residents that day that they were here and said, "Listen, I think what you should do is sit down with staff, not avoid staff, on a one-on-one discussion, to see if we can come to some happy medium. If not, you know, we, we move forward," but.
But I'll tell you, I didn't even come here to talk about that. Riviera is in my rearview mirror. I'm talking, going forward, we have an opportunity to really do a good bike network, a good walking network, and when those people come up, then, you know, we can, we can hopefully educate them and we can get something in. The, the city has passed a complete streets ordinance, a complete streets policy. Now, now it's time to implement, start to implement some of these policies.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask Jessica a quick question?
Thank you.
Is there a distinction between the study that this grant calls for and studies in the past, is there any, or is it just sort of an update?
So this is a level of stress, which is an emergent, it's a change in the way we approach planning corridors and essentially what it will do is, you know, similar to what Robert was just saying, there, we have a missing connection, we have missing connections all over the place and this will measure and provide justification about why we should be, additional justification about why we should be implementing additional infrastructure, complete street infrastructure in these corridors. Why don't people ride their bicycles on Alhambra between Coral Way and Sevilla? Well, because there's not a safe place to ride and so they measure that and so we'll be able to qualify that. So is it, is it an additional layer? So then we are presenting facts to the commission as it relates to this infrastructure, we're armed with those facts.
Thank you.
One final thing to this study.
Yes, sir.
I, I would ask and ask the staff and I guess the commission, is that this, this report says that they will have stake, the proposal says they will have stakeholder groups get together and opine on this. I would ask them that they go a little bit further and have it open to the general public. It's not just about what we think, obviously, it's the general public and that was a complaint of the 2014 plan, so we'd like to avoid that.
That's essential, I agree.
You know, maybe, and maybe, I know it costs money, but maybe we need to actually show examples to the community how it would look in a neighborhood, you know, actually show, implement and not just, and I'm not saying we have to do an entire street, I mean, just say, you know, maybe do one span of a house or somebody who's willing to take care of that or willing to have that in front of their home so people can get an understanding and see firsthand what we're actually talking about. I think when you talk about things in the abstract, people get a lot more confused. I, I see infrastructure, I see that roadwork and I understand it because that's what I do, but people may not understand that, listen, this is not as complicated or as invasive as they, as they may feel it is. I think examples and tangible, you know, an opportunity to see it, to look at it, to stand over it may convince some people that this actually works and this may be actually feasible. Do you agree with me or, I mean, I know it costs money, but...
No, I, I think that, and it's not the intent to not be responsive to residents, but sometimes we, we cut off discussion out of concern for their opposition when maybe we ought to give it, staff, the opportunity to have, you know, a, a discussion with them on the specifics of what they are so opposed to and, and, and the opportunity to educate them. Now, people come back after all of that and are still so adamantly opposed to us, then, you know, we will make a decision, you know, based on that education and not just a reaction or just misinformation that may be given. So I think sometimes we, we could, we could slow the process a little bit and maybe find a way to deal with it that allows people to express their concerns and yet allow staff the opportunity to attempt to educate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rorono.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Right, the next item, K2, Discussion and Regulations Regarding Bike Riding on City Sidewalks.
Yes, so the pilot program for the bike share has been deployed and we're going to start seeing, if I haven't seen them yet, some of you may have seen the bike share program being deployed, the bikes being out there for people to pick up. So in that vein, we thought we needed to look at like we did with scooters, where are people allowed to ride bicycles and where do we want them to be allowed to? I shared an opinion with you last night that explains that under state law, bicycles are permitted to be ridden on sidewalks generally unless a municipality wishes to prohibit them from being ridden on sidewalks. So this is a discussion to see what it is that we want to do. I want the Assistant City Attorney, Stephanie Throckmorton, to come up and explain what our code says right now. I do believe, we've discussed with staff, Jessica, if you want to come up as well, that staff does not believe that in the residential neighborhoods that we should be disallowing them on sidewalks because we don't have an infrastructure where they're safe to be ridden and it probably is not a big issue to have it on a residential street versus, for example, on Miracle Mile, where as you will see, we already prohibit them. So I'll let them explain and then we can have a discussion about what you'd like to do.
Good morning. Currently, the code states that bicycles are not allowed on sidewalks of Miracle Mile and we're posted. I believe where it's posted are those three blocks, north and south of Ponce, north and south of Miracle Mile on Ponce, same where we've discussed with scooters. So those are the only areas in our code where posted in Miracle Mile where bikes are not allowed on sidewalks.
Are they currently out on Geralda Plaza?
I, I don't know if it's posted or not, I'll have to ask the, the parking director if it's posted there.
I don't believe it's posted.
Okay. So can you give us your opinion generally, Jessica, from a technical standpoint? The commission can appreciate that.
As you know, we do not have robust bicycling infrastructure in the city of Coral Gables. It's not connected, it is not helping to address the mobility needs that we have here in the city. We don't have a place for families to ride their bicycles with their children because as you know, we also have a traffic calming issue where families are afraid to be in their streets. It is our opinion in Public Works that people should be able to ride bicycles on the sidewalks until we have adequate bicycling infrastructure. Sidewalks are not where we want to have people riding their bikes, but right now, it's the only place that we have for people to ride their bikes to get from place to place. As it relates specifically to Geralda, it would be my recommendation that the stakeholders be brought into the discussion because I don't know if there is an issue with people and their bikes on Geralda at this point. I personally have not gotten any complaints, but it doesn't mean that you haven't gotten any complaints. So I would strongly encourage that they be brought into the discussion before considering not allowing bikes. But also, I prefer that the code remain the same as it relates to restrictions of just limiting it to where posted. That gives us a lot more flexibility than writing it into the code, which I also would have recommended for scooters had we had engaged in that part of the discussion.
Jessica, I believe we had talked about having a stakeholder present from the group in Geralda, was that person ever met, asked to come?
I did not reach out to anyone, no.
So let's move in that direction. Can I just ask you a quick question? Let's look at other, other municipalities, what are they doing in regards to similar areas like Geralda? For example, Lincoln Road in Miami Beach, are you allowed to ride bikes on Lincoln Road?
I'm not, I'm not familiar.
Robert?
No.
No. Are you familiar of any other, you know, areas in Miami-Dade County where you have a similar situation as Geralda, Miracle Mile, where?
Not in Miami, not in Miami-Dade County, actually, no, but the way, you know, the trend is, is that it's more mixing all, if we're not going to have separation, then we're going to mix everything. So slow streets that share space with people walking and other modes of transportation. So it's, we would like to either be separate or slow and together.
When we had spoke about it yesterday, I, I had such a, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with someone walking their bike on Miracle Mile. I mean, if, you know, you ride so far and you get to a certain point that, you know, you can get off your bike and walk it on the, you know, on the mile to get to where you're, you're going. That doesn't prevent someone from, you know, being able to use their bike to go throughout the city, it's just when you get to, you know, a certain spot where there is congestion and there are people on the sidewalks and there are tables and, and all of that. And the same thing for Geralda, that you can certainly ride to Geralda and if, you know, I don't, I'm not so sure that it would be a good thing to have people riding their bikes through Geralda, but you can get off your bike and you walk it.
I think, I think what we're talking about is riding.
Yeah, the, the way the code is written, it says the riding of bikes is prohibited on Miracle Mile, so to the extent that someone is walking.
But sometimes even people, yeah, but you know, when it's, does it say bike riding or does it say no bikes on Miracle Mile?
It says the riding of bikes, the riding of bicycles.
But it's very important that if we are not going to provide a place for people to ride their bikes, at the very least, we have a place to park.
Yes.
We need additional bicycle parking in these areas.
So what's holding you back in regards to delivering on that? Because the other day I brought it up about Miracle Mile and they said, no, we have it, we have, we have bicycle parking. But, but you're saying right now that we need more?
So what, what we're...
So that's why, that's why I stopped, that's why I didn't even continue that discussion because they told, my colleagues told me we have.
So here's what we're experiencing right now. We have dockless bikes now that we are staging at our bike racks, we have scooters that we are staging at our bike racks and then we have personal, you know, your own personal bikes that are at bike racks. We can absolutely increase the amount of bicycle parking at the commission's direction.
We do have bike racks on Miracle Mile and people can, can ride and then just take the bike and, and, and store it there, but, but we, we don't have riding within, within Miracle Mile.
So what would you recommend in regards to Miracle Mile, Geralda? What would you recommend for additional bike racks? Do you, do you already have something in mind? Do you want to roll out more?
We have some locations identified where we could increase the bicycle parking.
So what's stopping you?
We can move forward.
Okay, so, okay, so colleagues, sorry, mayor, it's your meeting, you're back from, what would you like to do so we don't have this discussion again? Because the last time we had this discussion, it was we have sufficient...
Well, I think it's kind of an administrative issue.
I know, but I'm saying, but I want to, I want to empower, I want to empower.
Have we addressed bicycles, bicycle riding?
Yet.
On Geralda?
Not yet. We're still discussing.
I would like to address that and forbid the riding of bicycles on Geralda. With the number of people that are in Geralda, I think it's very dangerous to have someone riding a bicycle in Geralda. And that someone is probably not somebody like Mr. Rorono or us, riding responsibly to a restaurant, but it's teenagers or reckless people or whatever and they're going to run people over.
But if I may, mayor, and I agree with your concerns, but I think we already made one error and I hate to go back to Riviera because I was educated here that we, I'm not going back, I'm just saying, I think I made a mistake on that vote, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem admitting it. We should have gone back to stakeholders, we should have forced the residents to listen and be engaged in the situation, not just abandoning the whole process. So you made a very good point before, why don't we engage stakeholders here, have a sit-down discussion, not saying I'm in favor or opposed, I want to hear what the stakeholders have to say before I make...
Yeah, but the stakeholders are the restaurants and the stakeholders are the users, the 39,000 people on Saturday that were at Geralda and a bicycle, bicycle riding doesn't belong there. This is not a neighborhood where, you know, people would...
But I think, but I think, mayor, we should have that discussion and come to an, come to an agreement after we've, have all the information before us. That's just my opinion.
Right, I'm not suggesting that we allow bicycle riding, I am suggesting that the stakeholders be engaged on this.
I think Commissioner Keon made a very good point, that I don't have an issue with somebody walking a bike on Geralda.
We have an organized group that represents...
That's a given, I know, but...
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we forbid bicycle riding on Geralda.
Now, sir, would you like that done by posting or would you like to actually amend our code?
No, amend our code and post it, both. I would like to make that motion and if there's not a second, it'll die. And then the next time somebody gets run over, then, you know, we'll, we'll see who's responsible.
But Michael...
Is there a second to my motion?
Can we?
No?
Let's, let's discuss this.
It dies for lack of a second.
Let's discuss this. Currently, going back to Commissioner Keon's comments about being able to take your bike, get off your bike, walk it through Geralda, obviously, you don't want to have to drive all the way around and hit Alhambra to go, let's say, to the bank or to the, you know, to the bakery or to one of the businesses that are right across the street. What are the alternatives for bikers, for people, not bikers, but I mean, people who are bicycling through our city? What is, and residents, cyclists, excuse me. I was going to show you how much of a novice I am, I apologize.
I'm also not a cyclist, I also, I just ride a bike on the weekends.
I want to make sure I use the right jargon, I just use bikers, you know?
And occasionally to work, but for example, if I'm riding my bike with my son, which I do nearly every weekend and we frequent someplace on Geralda, we will ride our bikes to the location where we are going to have lunch.
Yes.
And that means that we will have our bikes sitting next to us at the table and, but not, there is not bike parking within Geralda, it's at the ends. But, you know, I'm one example and there are many examples beyond me and I'm interested in hearing if there are issues that the, the business owners are encountering, I'm, I'm really interested in that because if there isn't a problem, then we...
Let me ask you a question, when you, your experience with the 39,000 people on a Saturday, did you ride your bike into Geralda?
Wouldn't do that, I would get off my bike.
Or do you get off the bike and bring it to the restaurant?
I would get off my bike.
Okay, that's my point.
But you're also with a small child, too.
I would get off my bike no matter what if there were that many people there. But in the middle of the night, if there was no one there, I would ride through. I don't think anybody would notice.
At three in the, in the morning, nobody will object.
Nobody will notice.
All right, what's the commission's pleasure? I made a motion which failed for lack of a second on Geralda.
I, listen, I, I agree with you.
I do too.
But I'm open to engaging stakeholders and getting more information before we do it and I would do it just as a posting rather than as an ordinance to Jessica's point. That way, if there's a change in the future, it's a simple administrative change.
And that would be...
We don't need a change to the ordinance because it already says we're posted. Staff can have a meeting with the stakeholders and if the general view is that they should be prohibited, then we can post it.
Right.
That would be my recommendation to proceed.
Okay, is there a motion of any kind or a suggestion?
You want to speak? Go ahead, mayor.
No, no, they're, they're going to, yeah.
So also as...
We have Mr. Holmes and Mr. Rorono that wish to speak.
Maybe staff could also, you know, you could look at the availability of bike racks or bike parking on Geralda to provide people with the opportunity to park their bikes and walk to whatever they want to go to also.
But isn't the bike racks at the end sort of a better situation or do you want them throughout Geralda? Is that what you're suggesting?
I would have to take a closer look at Geralda because I have not specifically looked for additional locations on Geralda, only on Miracle Mile, but the locations of the bike, actually, they're, they are full quite a bit, particularly on those really busy nights where you don't want people riding their bikes through.
Why not?
That's when they're very...
It's their right to ride the bike, why not? Go ahead, Mr. Rorono.
Thank you. Robert Rorono, 1544 Mercy Avenue. First, I would ask, is there a problem? Did somebody get hit on Geralda? Madam City Attorney?
I'm sorry.
Is your, your item?
No, but if, if, if nobody has been hit yet, we don't want anybody to get hit and with 39,000 people and 41,000 people on two days, we don't want, I think it's very dangerous to have people riding bikes.
But I understand, sir.
And the ones that ride bikes are not like you, responsible people or like Jessica Keller, responsible people, they will be teenagers, they will be irresponsible people and we don't want anybody to get hit.
I understand, but we just, we just had two months of, like you said, 39,000, 41,000 people on Geralda and nobody got hit. So this, I understand, but this is coming down now and it's going to be a lot less people. We didn't, nobody got hit, but when it was packed, now it's going to get lighter and you're going to outlaw bikes.
Yes.
I don't think that's a good solution. I mean, I tell you, I think another solution, if you have a concern, if you have a concern, I appreciate that, mayor, that you have a concern for it, because I wouldn't want anybody riding their bike fast through Geralda, I agree with you. But if you just post at the ends of the street like they do in other places, ride slow, that people have to ride slow through there, then maybe they could enforce it if there was a problem. Obviously, you don't want people riding in groups, riding long, you know, riding really fast through there, but somebody that's like, like Ms. Keller said, her and her son, they should have the ability to ride down the middle, you know, to, to a spot.
No, they shouldn't. They, she tells us that she got off, gets off, walks 75 feet to the restaurant, which is going to have a hamburger with her son and has the bicycle next to her.
Well, well, no, she may not do it, but I think she has certainly the right to do it. As we've all said, this, the streets are for everybody. That doesn't mean that I stop, I lose all my rights when I get on that bike. And I'll tell you something that you're going to do by doing this, because the same thing has happened and I know people have said it and I've done the same thing, quite frankly. When you start outlawing bikes on a certain road, those people that ride bikes that might go on that road in the weekend...
One street, on one pedestrian street.
No, I understand, but...
We closed that street on purpose in order to make it a pedestrian street.
Yeah, but, but you're not putting a car in there.
You see, I, I have a problem with, I have a problem with, listen to me, I have a problem with bicyclists and your attitude. And my problem, you know, you, bicyclists, not, not yours personally, I'm sorry. There are probably 20 people in the city of Coral Gables that are obsessed or that are very, very committed cyclists, 20, and they're the ones that are here complaining and vociferating on the rights of bicyclists to ride on pedestrian streets like Geralda. I want to hear the rest of the 51,000 people in Coral Gables that care about bikes, that do ride bikes on weekends with their son and whatever and do not insist on imposing their bicycles on the residents of Coral Gables and cutting into their swales or cutting into the median or cutting into whatever. Those people also have rights, they're not as vocalist you bicyclists, not personally, are, but I'm astonished that we are allowing you to ride, that you want to ride a bicycle in Geralda, which is a pedestrian street, which we closed on purpose with 41,000 people. Yeah, there will be fewer people, but there will be 20,000. I'm, I'm just frankly offended by it.
Mr. Mayor, I personally, and I won't talk about you car drivers, because we're all car drivers, okay? We all, and, and if we're going to say you car drivers, people that, that come to the street and don't stop or don't signal and we have the same problem, but, but I will tell you, I don't want to ride through Geralda, but I do want to be able to take my family and ride to Rice if I want to, very slowly, obviously, I'm going to do that, put my bike to the side if it's not bothering anybody and eat there.
But, Robert, the challenge I, the challenge I have with this is the fact that we closed off this street to be more of a plaza.
To make it pedestrian.
Right? And, you know, when, when people, I think unfairly say things like, you know, I'm driving a car and, you know, these cyclists, right, are a nuisance to my ability to drive my
car and, you know, these cyclists, right, are a nuisance to my ability to drive my car, your answer, and the answer of most other cycling supporters that I hear is, we have as much of a right to the road as they do, which is true under the law. This is a road that we've closed off to cars. And so now, you're taking sort of the opposite thing, is but we're different than cars, we're allowed to go onto pedestrian areas.
Well, no, no. Well, this is, this is an area.
The idea is, it's not just a safety thing, although it is a safety thing. It's also just a nuisance thing. You know, if what you want is for people to be, you know, in outdoor cafes in an area where their kids can run around and things like that, you don't want people riding bicycles through there. I have no problem with people walking them through, parking them, having lunch, that's great. But I think the more, the bigger concern is just not just the safety, but the nuisance part of it, and maintaining this as a plaza, right? And you can have both.
And then we go to motorcycles. The other day, I saw somebody riding a motorcycle and parking the motorcycle in front of Threefold Cafe, which is almost halfway in.
Well, that's definitely, that has nothing to do, this is illegal, that is illegal. That's a motorized vehicle. That's a motorized vehicle.
No, it isn't.
What do you mean?
If you make your motion again, I'll second it. If you make your motion again, I'll.
I will make a motion to forbid.
What about making a sign that says people slow down?
I will make a motion to forbid bicycle riding in Geralda, not as a part of the code, but posted.
Right, and I will second it. It doesn't prohibit people from getting off their bike and walking through, and if staff believes that you need more bike racks mid-block so that people can do it, you know, mid-block as well as at the ends, depending on where they want.
There's a motion, it has been seconded.
You know, they can walk their bike to there, then I would think that they could do that administratively.
Thank you. We have people that wish to speak. Thank you, Robert. Mr. Holmes, please.
Yeah. Thank you. I agree with your position, Mayor Valdez-Fowley. It's such a complex thing, the whole transportation issue, but I do agree that it is a safety issue. If you're on Geralda Plaza, can you imagine somebody sitting there with their kids having dinner and a bike plows into them? All right, the child could be injured. I mean, it's just that, it's that simple. And I, as a Miracle Mile property owner, I should start out by saying, my name is Jackson Ripp Holmes, I live at 35 Sedonia Avenue in Coral Gables. I'm in affordable housing, I'm in favor of affordable housing, it's all I can afford. I urge you to go slow. I think there's a place for bikes, but I don't think it should include a situation where they can plow into a pedestrian. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cruz, Maria Cruz, bike riding.
I was gonna try to be quiet today, but I couldn't help it. Maria Cruz, 1447 Miller Road. I understand that people like to ride bikes. Not me, but I know that people do. But let me tell you, I have a sidewalk in front of my house. Now, I have to look both ways before I get on the sidewalk because the people that ride bikes, they don't have to worry about me. You know, when they're riding the bike, they have the right of way. So if I step on the sidewalk, I could be in trouble, okay? I think there's a time and a place for people to ride bikes, and I agree with you, the plaza is not a place for people to ride bikes. And I think that when we say that they can ride bikes on sidewalks, they need to be taught that the sidewalks are for the people, you know, for the walkers first, for the pedestrians first, and not their own possession.
Thank you, man. All right, there's a motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Keon?
Just, just, sorry, take a timeout here.
Go ahead.
Listen, I agree with, again, your position on this, but again, I don't necessarily want to rush into it without hearing from the owners of the businesses on Geralda Plaza.
I'm voting no.
And I'm not sure what the downside is to hearing from them.
Waiting an extra meeting, waiting an extra two meetings.
So I'm in favor of the general motion and doing it as a posting, as we discussed, but I think we should wait to post it here until we get feedback from the business.
The motion is to forbid the riding of bicycles in Geralda. Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Valdez-Fowley?
Yes.
Commissioner Lago?
No.
Commissioner Mayna?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Keon?
Yes, but I would say, it fails. I would suggest that we allow them, that they come back in whatever period of time. Jessica, how long would it take you to come back and, after talking to the restaurant owners on Geralda about the issue of bikes?
It fails.
I mean, what do you, what do you think?
I would need about three months.
Okay. Three months to do what, sorry?
Hopefully, nobody gets run over.
No, I think that's too long.
That's too long, yeah, I don't.
It's too long. That's too long a time to talk to people and say, you're gonna be hurt by it.
There's a Geralda Subcommittee of the Bid, Nick Sharp from Threefold, I think is the chair of it. Let's just reach out to them, get their general viewpoint on it. What I don't want is for them to feel like we didn't ask them and we didn't get their input. We may or may not follow what their input is, I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you. We may make a decision that we think is the right decision regardless, but I do want to know what their input is first and understand their perspective.
With the permission of the Chair, Ed Santamaria, Director of Public Works, I recommend it to Jessica to give herself some time in this because we do have a lot going on at all at the same time. We have a number of community meetings that we're undertaking in the next few weeks. But three months is a very, very conservative timeframe. We might be able to do it within the next month, month and a half.
I'm asking you to have a whole neighborhood, I'll give it to the next meeting. I'll reach out to Nick Sharp myself if I have to and get his input and tell him to get the input for me, and that's that.
Maybe they can have a member come and speak in the next.
Commissioner, I think we can get ahold of the Geralda portion of the bid, get their input, and then look to see that whether they, where they're looking at, because we can always, you can always ride your bike to each end and walk in.
Of course, that's a given, nobody's disputing that.
We can provide even additional areas to lock your bikes in the middle and so forth. So I think we can get ahold of them and give you a quick response.
Thank you.
All right.
By the next meeting, then, is that what you said?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, D3.
I was told we never ended up making a motion on D3.
That's correct, sir.
So I'll make the motion on that.
Second?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just before we move on to the next item, Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make sure from staff that we have a report at the next commission meeting in reference to bike racks, the locations, and whatever additional resources staff needs to make sure that we deliver on those bike racks. I don't want to come back six months from now, a year from now, the bike racks haven't been delivered. If that's critically important infrastructure, let's deliver on that. So, you know, tell us what you need and let's deliver on that, please.
And I know it's tangential, Peter, but at the last bid meeting, and you, Belkis was there as well, so you can get her input, but they, the members of the bid were saying that they're still in need of some common seating areas in Geralda Plaza. I think there were some, there was some back and forth on exactly what that would look like and what the exact items would be. I don't know what the status is as of today, but if you could just speak to Belkis and follow up with the bid on that?
I will, Commissioner.
I'd appreciate it.
I will.
I think, you know, and I had, someone had recommended.
And more trash cans, sorry.
But someone had, someone had recommended, because we don't need the bollards for cars anymore, that we would group the bollards together for seating purposes.
We do need the bollards to prevent cars from going in or terrorists.
No, 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 the bollards that are along Geralda, that, you know, were placed there because, for cars, that we could take those bollards that are placed individually along there and group them together for seating. I know there were, that came from the bid.
Commissioner, the reason we did not do that is because Geralda has only been closed for two years.
Right.
And has not been closed permanently. So the street has been designed as multi-use, the bollards on each side can be removed and the street can go back. The Geralda has been designed as an actual street.
Right, but we could.
And so if we, we only have it, the reason we went with the design is because it's only closed for a two-year period.
Right, but we could use, as long as during the two years that it's closed, we could rearrange those bollards differently and they could always go back to that original position. You know, that's not my idea. It was somebody in the bid that came and talked to me about it, so I don't, you can deal with it.
We have looked at the bollards to delineate, we wanted 10 feet on each side to be clear.
Yes.
And so we've used the bollards to delineate that 10 feet on either side so that we would not have seating encroaching on that. So that's, that's been the delineation, so that's how, that's what we've used.
And all I said is somebody came and talked to me about it.
Yeah.
We did look at those options, we did look at those options and we felt that just delineating that 10-foot area, I think, so that there would be encroachment from the dining.
All right, anything else to come before the meeting?
I am, yeah, I want to make sure that at the last meeting, it was approved to execute an agreement with Dover Coal for a planning study for the area north of 8th Street for that residential community, a planning study. I want to make sure that that gets executed, it doesn't get lost in the transition here.
We have set up a meeting to finalize the scope and at that point, it will be executed.
Okay, fine, thank you very much.
All right, you have a quick item?
Is, are we gonna talk about, at what point when we talk about the process we will use to, for new city manager, to recruit a new city manager?
Not today.
I'm asking you, at what point will we do?
Next time.
I think at the next meeting.
At the next meeting.
That was my goal, I was in a, hopefully, we could do it at the next meeting.
I was just asking when that would come along.
Not today.
Yeah, I just, if I could, just want to make a very simple brief statement, just to say to staff, I know there was a big change today. It's not lost on us that that might cause some anxiety down the line. We, I just want you to know, and I think we all want you to know, that we value your work. We really appreciate all your hard work and the excellent work that you all do, and we expect you to continue to do that, and we need you to, and we hope that you'll cooperate,